Welcome to the Tuesday, those Tuesday, hang on, let me do that again. Welcome to the Monday, October 22nd meeting of Lincoln City Council. Let's stand for a pledge of allegiance followed by a brief moment of meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Lincoln City Council meeting of October 22nd, 2018. In accordance with LB 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of the business of the Lincoln City Council is as follows. The clerk will call items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those in opposition. The applicant may make a short rebuttal. Each speaker may begin, should begin by stating their name, address, and whether they're speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. At this point, I'll ask the clerk to call the first item of business.
We will ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Testifiers may use either microphone, and there is a sign-in sheet by each microphone. We ask those individuals from city staff who are testifying to please state their name, title, and the department you work for. Once you have testified and council does not have questions of you, you may return to your seat. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items 1 through 3.
I want to take a motion for these items? I'm sorry, I'm up here.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Michael Boyd, would you please come forward?
I got way ahead of myself on the consent part, didn't I?
Just state your name and address.
My name is Michael Boyd. And my address is 411 West Godfrey Circle, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Mr. Boyd, thank you for coming today. You're being appointed to a board. Could you tell us a little bit about yourself?
I'm 41 years old, lived in Lincoln my whole life. I've been in the plumbing industry since I graduated high school. Just interested in trying to find a way to be more involved, and I think this is the way that I can do that.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the council? Would anyone else like to speak on this appointment?
To say thank you for your willingness to serve.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Were there others that were just being appointed that wish, I think everyone else stays?
Greg Newport.
Oh, Newport.
Mr. Newport.
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Greg Newport, otherwise known as Gregory in your.
Yeah.
I live at 1954 A Street here in Lincoln, and I'll sign that in. I'm just recently retired architect in Lincoln for about 38 years, I guess, with the Clark Anderson Partners. Been in front of you many times. I was deeply honored by asking, being asked by the mayor to be on the commission, and historic preservation is something I have a great passion for and quite a bit of experience with as well, so I'm just happy to serve if approved.
Excellent, thank you. Questions? Thank you very much. Next, Stacy Zervenka.
Thank you.
Stacy, would you tell us a little bit about yourself? First off, I'm sure I pronounced your name badly. Would you help me with that?
It's Zervenka.
Okay. Thank you. Tell us a little bit about you.
Well, I'm originally from Chicago, Illinois, and I went to college in Minneapolis, and then I worked for five years for Senator Sam Brownback of Kansas and Washington, D.C. I most recently lived in Sacramento, California, where I served as the executive officer of the California State Rehabilitation Council. My family and I have just moved to Lincoln in April, and I am committed to finding ways to increase and improve transportation options for people with disabilities who live in Lincoln.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that Stacy will be a great addition to the Startran Board, so we're excited to see her interest in doing that.
Questions from the council for either one of these two? Ms. Faris?
Just, yeah, impressive resume and things that you've done, so thanks for bringing all of your expertise and experience to our community.
Well, thank you for allowing me this opportunity.
Others? Thank you both. If there was one more?
Is Lynetta here?
Yeah.
Could you please come forward?
Thank you, Teresa.
Sure.
Good afternoon, yes, hi.
My name is Lynetta Edison Soe, L.E.N.E.T.T.A.E.D.I.S.O.N. and Soe. So I'm working at, now I'm working at Asian Community Culture Center as a community advocate and also a diabetes educator with our community there. So we serve refugees and immigrants there.
Excellent. Questions for this new appointee to the MAC committee? Councilman Camp.
Yes, yes, thank you very much. Kind of curious, so you originally from Thailand then?
Yes, Thailand and in a refugee camp, actually.
I saw that on your information. So what year did you immigrate to the United States?
Immigrated here, 2006.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Others? Thank you very much. Okay, are there other?
All right, that is it for appointees.
Okay.
If no one else wishes to come forward for any other item, we can vote on these items. Items 1A through H were introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Christensen. Second by Councilman Eskridge. Discussion of the motion. Teresa, would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. Items 2A through C were introduced by Eskridge?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, a motion by Councilman Eskridge and second by Councilman Camp. Discussion of the motion. Teresa, would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. Next then are our public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward and raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call item 4A, application of Copal Progressive Mexican Cuisine to expand its Class I liquor license for an additional indoor area measuring approximately 19 feet by 23 feet at 4747 Pioneer's Boulevard. Did you raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Cynthia Lopez, and my address is 4701 South 48th Street in Lincoln, Nebraska, 68516.
Welcome, Ms. Lopez. Tell us a little bit about your application, you and your application, please.
Yes, so we recently remodeled Copal because we were getting very busy, and I applied just for an addition to a room that is like for 15 to 20 people. Yes.
Questions from the council?
Do you want to say anything about your restaurant?
Yeah, well, we are a Mexican restaurant. We opened three years ago. It's more traditional food instead of like Tex-Mex. We focus a lot on the quality of the ingredients and just to show the traditions that we have in Mexico. So it's like if you go, like, it's like eating in Mexico City without leaving Nebraska, kind of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council? This is a public hearing. Would anyone from the audience like to speak on this agenda item? Thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you.
You go.
All right, next is the application of Tulun Ventures LLC, doing business as Thirsty Sports Bar, for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 85 feet by 115 feet at 317 South 11th Street on November 3rd from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Welcome.
Jason Vonkenel, 3740 Berlin Avenue.
Jason, welcome. Tell us a little bit about your application.
Myself and the owner of Group Therapy Bicycle Tours, which I assume you guys are probably familiar with, decided we'd like to have a street event down on 11th Street where we will take his smaller conference-style bicycles and teams of people, hopefully wearing costumes and such, right after Halloween. We'll race down the street, go around a cone, and come back. We plan to have a beer garden type of area set up with a food vendor. And we're really promoting the community in our 11th Street community as the basis of the event. So most of the businesses will be, have a vendor setup in the beer garden area. The Ink Alley, T-shirt Designs, there's the Better Life Nutrition. The actual event will run from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. I think the extended times on there were included for setup and teardown, but we hope to be completely gone and like we were never there by 10:00 p.m. that night of the event. And so here we are.
Questions from the council? Councilman Eskridge?
Yes, thank you. I did see in the application that there's a connection with the South of Downtown Community Organization. Can you explain that?
That's an organization that I've become fairly familiar with and worked with a little bit. I just attended some of their meetings that I enjoy. They, South of Downtown Community Development, from what, they're really involved with the F Street Rec Center, and they try to improve the quality of life, you know, in the South of downtown area. I know there's some of the projects they've worked on, or buying houses and trying to rehabilitate the houses and such, but that is the, you know, community-based part of it that we wanted to contribute back to.
Great, thank you.
Other questions from the council? Jason, I'm having a little trouble understanding the racecourse logistics. When you say "South of downtown," it puts me on the other side of K Street, but then your restaurant's located, where would this actually, what street would this actually be?
We actually went to, hoping to close the street from M to L Street, which is the street right in front of our businesses. So about from my door, which is right in the middle, will be the kind of bicycle course where they will go ride the bicycle down about 50 yards, go around a cone and come back. The other half of the street is which will fence in and will be kind of the commons area. The commons area, the festival area, will be separate kind of from the bicycle race area because we have to keep some of those things apart from each other, the alcohol specifically.
Get that.
Yeah, insurance company is a big thing, too. So, and then like I said, it will be enclosed itself, like on the street, the festival area. It won't connect to any bars. The sidewalks will still be open, and then people will be free to, you know, leave that area and go into bars or from the bars into that area, but they'll be very distinct areas.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Councilwoman Raybold?
Is this your first event, a race of this kind?
Yes, it's the first time we've done this. I've participated in similar, I think, activities, events, but for this specific thing, yes.
Tell us a little bit more, is it, you said it's a six-person team?
Yeah, the bicycles actually hold seven people, but there's, the driver's seat is the seventh person. So there will be an experienced driver that drives these at all times as the driver of the bike, and then six people will be on the bike. Circular in shape.
Mm-hmm.
And then what was the second part of your question? I think there was a second part.
I think you answered, I mean, that's a unique type of race.
It is unique, and we've found is there's, there's definitely been a couple events through, in the country that we've tried to research, but not very many. We're limiting it to 32 teams. I don't know if we'll quite reach that. I think we'll be somewhere in the neighborhood, and we'll probably have everybody go through like one time the first time, and like we'll time them, and then after that, we'll make a little bracket that everybody can see, and they'll run through like a second time. It'll be a single elimination. And I think, you know, we should be done well before 8:00 p.m. Everybody will get a race at, do the race twice. And we're planning on, you know, the festival area is really set up, too, to keep people's times. We're going to have like some bag boards set up and things like that to kind of keep people entertained and really preparing for anything because it is our first time doing it, and one thing I've learned through experiences, we need to be, we're going to have to, you know, shoot it, you know, play, make some thing, decisions that day and be prepared for anything.
Thank you.
I don't think it's going to be too crazy.
Councilman Camp, then Councilwoman Gayler Baird.
Yes, thank you for coming forward. How many bicycles do you have?
He actually has five bicycles. One of them is the very large 20-seat bicycle that I think is, gets seen quite a bit, but he has four of the smaller six-person bicycles. So we have two racing at a time and two potentially backups. We planned some things. We realized that the bikes might get more use, so we're actually going to have like a slightly kind of a push start, like five feet, so we'll get them rolling a little bit so that they're not just like slamming. We've been out there and tested it a couple times.
So on the course, how far between M and L would the riding range be?
The street itself, it's great because it's one of the widest streets downtown. It's 85 feet across. I want to say, and we do have the bikes sep, as far away, well, one will be at the middle point of the street and the other will be at the edge of the street. So I would guess they're somewhere around 30 feet apart, just going off a guess, memory type of guess.
And so they just go one direction from one end of the block to the other or down the?
They will do a, they will go down approximately 50 yards and go around a cone and then come back, about 40 yards.
Well, the whole length is 115 feet, so if you had.
The area, the 85 by 115 feet is just the area that will be enclosed for the STL. The rest of the area, which isn't, the 85 by 15 is, is one area, and then where the bikes race is a different area.
Yeah, about halfway.
But we will have the entire street blocked off from M to L. So half the street will be the festival area, and the other, approximately half of the street will be the bike racing area.
Does that, and all of the businesses along there have agreed on that?
Yes, I'd say, I said we've excited, and most of them, I'd say all of them are, other than the College of Heritage, are particip, they have two teams actually entered into the thing, but they're participating in some sort of way or have a vendor booth there, and they're going to be involved with it also.
Does this affect the carriage park garage in any way?
It does, the, one of, thankfully, they do have two entrances. I did have, we had my, the events team meeting on Monday, and the parking staff didn't, they were okay with it. We will be blocking one of their entrances, but there is another additional entrance that can be used, and there will also be signs indicating where the other entrance is for some people.
And I have one sort of semi-related question. Over the weekend, I saw one of your bikes going from 8th to 9th on P Street, and behind it was a fire engine. And the firefighters fortunately weren't on an emergency call, but it was taking an awful long time. What are your procedures when it comes to public safety equipment and so forth? Because unfortunately, the bicycle, especially on a hilly area like that going uphill, just can't.
I might not be, since I'm the owner of the sports bar, Thirsty Sports Bar, I am working with Drew, who is the owner of that bicycle, and I know he's been, you know, it took him a very long process to get approved and do some of these things. I probably shouldn't speak specifically to his policies with those bicycles. That would be more here, his area, and he wasn't able to be here today.
It might be good for him to visit with our fire chief and police chief just to make sure, and I haven't talked to them directly, but it did concern me because that's a busy segment and.
I agree, the routes and paths that he, that he goes down. I know they're, I know they kind of have a route that goes between the Hay Market and 11th Street for us, and every now and then they do try to venture down there, so I'm sure that's some challenges that I've been slightly familiar with. They used to use alleys, and then they maybe use some streets. They try to avoid buses and things like that, so definitely I'll mention to them that you guys voiced that and things.
And then on the races part, too, will the racing, will you be watching participants to make sure that they haven't had too much consumption of alcohol?
Yeah, you know, obviously we get a lot of training in that. Anybody that is serving the alcohol will already be bartenders, you know, in the industry, so, you know, I do know it's a very big deal to watch that for you guys and be able to do the event again. And that's why we also have a food truck there. I think it's very important to serve food at events like this and even bars in general. So, yeah, that's one of our, we have, we'll have two duty officers, and we also, I feel like we're very well-staffed on the event, and people will be watching the participants that day.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gayler Baird?
My question's been answered, thank you.
Are there other questions from the council? Would anyone in the audience like to testify on this agenda item? Thank you very much for coming forward. I think we're going to move to the next agenda item now.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, we're not. We're going to vote, aren't we?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of items 4A and 4B.
Second?
A motion by Councilman Camp and a second by Councilwoman Raybold. Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7 to 0. Next then are our public hearing resolutions. Item 5A, accepting a report of new impending claims against the city for September 16th through the 30th, 2018.
Good afternoon, hello.
Good afternoon.
I assume you're here for this. Please tell us your name, and don't forget to sign in before you leave.
My name is Gladys Branch. I live on 2946 North 53rd Street, apartment 4 in Lincoln, Nebraska. My deal here is that I was on Startran bus July the 10th. Okay, the bus stopped abruptly. Now, my thing is, if the bus driver wasn't going so fast, why would she have to stop abruptly? And I fell from the, like, the third seat all the way to the front of the bus to where she was at. And they don't want to pay the hospital bills, and I can't, because I don't think it was my fault that I fell. You know, then the lady, she didn't even want to call the ambulance. I say, ma'am, don't you see that I'm on the floor? You know, and I was almost home when this happened. So, yeah, I feel as though I wasn't in the wrong when the bus stopped. I feel that the lady that was driving the Startran bus shouldn't have been going so fast where she had to stop so quickly, you know, and that's my, and after the incident, I went, I had to go back to the hospital several times after this, you know, for the same, the same knee. You know, then the last time I went, I guess you can call it blessed because don't know doctor that give you shots in your knee usually be in the emergency room. So my knee was pain is so bad, I had to leave work in the ambulance to go to the hospital. And the doctor gave me that shot in my, in my knee, and I've been walking pretty good, you know, since then, but before then, I never walked on a walker. They gave me a walker when I was at the hospital. They gave me ice bags when I was at the hospital. They gave me pain medication to take home from the hospital. I mean, and Startran said it wasn't my fault. Startran said it was my fault. I had forgotten my address, Lord, I'm, that's all I have.
Councilman Eskridge?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Branch, for being here. Do you have a dollar amount of what this has cost you?
Well, I have all the hospital bills. I sent them to, to Startran, and I kept copies.
Okay.
Yes.
I just didn't see a dollar amount on what I had here.
Yes, I even sent pictures of my, I don't know who I sent the pictures to, the lady that I talked to on the phone that told me where this was going to be at.
Okay, we'll get that.
Okay.
Other questions from the council? Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. Ms. Branch, thank you for being here. I think we have the pictures, are they the pictures of the knee and you standing? Good, okay, so we did get those pictures, just so you know. Do you have any idea how fast the bus was going?
No, I don't. No, I don't.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Councilwoman Camp? Councilwoman, yes.
We'd have the city attorney come forward, please.
Jefker Patrick, would you help us, please?
I didn't know if Ms. Branch was finished. They didn't want to cut her off.
I appreciate that. You have questions?
Finished? Questions? Or did you just?
You need to introduce yourself.
Jefker Patrick, city attorney.
If you could kind of review the analysis that you and your staff have made on this case.
Yeah, the Startran bus was proceeding up to the intersection, was eastbound on St. Paul, approaching the intersection of 47th Street. As it approached, as the bus driver approached the intersection, she didn't see any traffic coming from either way, which, but as she approached the intersection, she was still braking and getting ready to stop braking and saw an SUV approaching from the right, which did not yield. Seeing the SUV by ready to barrel into the intersection at high speed, she then put on the brakes rather abruptly, was able to avoid a collision with the SUV that then proceeded through the intersection. We had an opportunity after receiving the claim to review, and there wasn't as there would be if there was, had been an accident. There was not a review by the Startran Review Board, as there would have been had there been a collision. But after we received the claim, we reviewed the video, and we, the video from the Startran bus, which showed the oncoming traffic, so you saw the SUV going through the intersection without slowing. Also, we're able to view the effect on the two passengers in the bus. There were only two at the time of the incident, and what it appears from the videotape is that Ms. Branch, at the time that the bus driver applied the brakes, was getting ready to reach for the cord, so she was somewhat off balance when the Startran bus driver applied the brakes, and she did fall. It was clear from the videotape, she did fall out of her seat. We're not disputing at all that she was injured. However, what we would submit to the city council, the reason why we're recommending denial of this claim, is that the bus driver, the Startran bus driver, was not negligent. She was driving down the street at a safe speed, approaching an intersection, saw a car that was driving into the intersection without yielding, had the Startran bus sufficiently under control where she was able to safely brake and avoid the collision. I think that she did a good job as far as being a Startran bus driver without any negligence. On behalf of Startran, we can't recommend to the council that you pay the claim.
Councilwoman Raybold?
Jef, what was the value of all the medical bills submitted?
The bills were submitted, we didn't tally them up because our recommendation was denial.
Other questions from the council? Yes, Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you, thank you, Jef. So because there is no accident, I'm guessing that there was no, no tickets issued, and anybody have any identifying information on the SUV?
Not to my knowledge. It's not in the incident report itself, and I don't know that we went back to look at the videotape to try to obtain that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, thank you, Ms. Branch. We'll go through our agenda and come back to vote on this item later. Is there anyone else in the chamber that'd like to address claims? Is there anyone else in the chamber that'd like to address claims against the city, this agenda item?
Darrell Zerline, D-A-R-R-E-L-L, Zerline, Z-U-E-R-L-E-I-N. I believe I had sent you folks emails and I don't know if you had the pictures or not that came with that. But basically several years ago, I noticed that the street was creeping and moving my driveway. So for about two years, I would call every time I was in town and ask someone from the street engineering department to come take a look, give my phone number, no reply. Finally, the last time I called, I was advised and sent the information to submit a claim to the city attorney, which I did. Now, the claim was denied because of two holes where it was mudjacked the sidewalk, not the driveway. And it was said it was natural heave from the weather in Lincoln. And the pictures show that if you go across the street, the street has actually moved about two and a half to three inches. If you look at my driveway, it has pushed the driveway up about three inches. The expansion joint is completely compressed. The entire driveway has moved approximately an inch and a half towards my house. And it's still moving. So basically, Thrasher came out and said that it needed to have a three-inch expansion joint put in to, to control the street creep. So I guess my claim is that your street's moving and it's pushing the driveway up. And I don't know if you need pictures or you've seen the pictures. I have them.
I, I did receive copies of them with, did all the other council?
And if you received a picture from the city that showed the little red, there's the holes in the driveway on the driveway, that picture has got to be at least eight years old. It does not show the amount of rise in that driveway. Secondly, supposedly somebody went out to look at that, but I'm not privy to what they found because that is, quote, "a work product." And I don't know if the council was privy to it or not.
Questions from the council? Would you like to speak with staff?
City attorney.
Mr. Patrick, would you yield for a question?
I like saying that.
Jeff Kirkpatrick, city attorney?
Yes, Jeff, if you could address some of the comments that were made by Mr. Zerline?
Yes, we did have someone go out from the city to inspect his driveway and that was in July of this year. The conclusion from the inspection was that it was the damage, the, the pressure on his driveway was caused by freeze-thaw cycle rather than what the engineer would describe as true, uh, street creep. However, even if it was street creep, our ordinance states very clearly that property owners are the people that are responsible for the repair of drive and driveway approaches along right of way. And so, A, our engineer didn't believe it was true street creep, but B, even if it was true street creep, under our city ordinance, the city is not liable to, to property owners that are affected by street creep. There is no act of negligence, negligence by the city in installing the street whereby we would be negligent. But in order to clarify that, we do have in our city ordinance, the, we've established that it's the private property owners that are responsible for their driveway maintenance. So with that, I'd answer any questions. Or Mr. Schaefer is here as well.
When you say driveways, that includes in the slope entrances on the city right of way?
That would include anything right that's abutting to the, the city street.
Councilman Eskridge?
Yes, I don't know if this is a question for, for you or Mr. Schaefer. Mr. Zerline indicated that, that he had called previous and had people come out or, or asked to have people come out and, and inspect the problem that he was having. Do we have any knowledge that those calls were received or that anyone?
I don't have anything in the file from that. Don't know what, when it was.
Would that call have been made to Public Works?
I would have assumed it would have been routed at some point to Public Works.
Okay. And Mr. Schaefer, that might be helpful if you had information on that.
Thomas Schaefer with Public Works and Utilities Department. Yes, when we do an investigation, we would look to see if we had received any. We could not find anything in our records. It doesn't mean it didn't happen. Until more recently, when we've asked people to submit these claims through law, sometimes the record keeping was kept by individuals and not in a central location. And we've had several retirements and turnover in staff. So not going to dispute that he may have called in the past. I do not know what happened to those, though.
If, if you did receive such a call, not necessarily in this case, but if, if you did receive a call, then what, and, and it were inspected and this is what you saw, what, what would, what would you do?
Well, we'd talk with law and as Jeff pointed out, a lot of times we talk with the, the property owners and point out to them that point of the code, that they're responsible for their drive approach and suggest that they, they work to get that resolved.
So the city wouldn't remedy the situation. It would just be a matter of notifying the property owner of the problem, which property owners aware of the problem, it sounded like.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Schaefer? Councilman Camp?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Schaefer, for giving us more information. You say that you mentioned the records don't show that Mrs. Zerline had called previously and we won't dispute that, but and I assume you've got everything changed so that we can keep track of inquiries or calls like this of citizens?
Yes, you know, the city attorney's website now has a wonderful place where folks can go in and file claims like this. Not just street creep, but any, any type of claim. And that way it's a matter of record in the city attorney's office and the investigations can be funneled through there and it's less ad hoc than it's been in the past.
I believe Mrs. Zerline said he called most recently in July of this year. Did I recall that correctly?
Yeah, that's when I was, that's when I was sent the forms to fill out or how to fill out the claim with that. And basically the person said that that's probably the only way you'll get any response.
Would that have gone through the city law department then?
Yes, I filed the claim then with the city law department. Now whether that was recorded or not, I don't know.
Yes, that was recorded.
I just want to make sure that we have a procedure whereby.
We do. We have one that's worked very well since city attorney's office has made that readily available. They did some training with us and all the city departments. And as far as I know, it's been working great.
Mrs. Zerline mentioned the, the street had moved two to three inches or two and a half to three inches there on St. Paul. Is that typical of a situation? What would we do with that occurring? Because if it moves, it shifts that much, I'm assuming that on the other side of the street that suddenly a gap appears.
Yeah, there can be a gap on the other side of the street when we do see that in, in cases of street creep. In this case, while we do see a gap between the driveway and the other side of the street, we believe that's because they had an extra thick expansion joint put in there when they constructed it. It looks like it's deteriorated. But yes, there are cases around the city where we do see street creep. It moves an inch or two. And on a horizontal curve, there's, there's not a whole lot you can do. Maybe you can go in and we try to cut an additional joint if we think it's going to move a whole lot more on us because we want to protect our streets and, and such. But a lot of times two to three is, is a rarity. A lot of times you see nothing in terms of street creep and, and potential locations where it can happen. So, you know, there are standard inch expansion that we put along a T or at the ends of horizontal curves takes care of, of street creep. When we see it go beyond that, we may have to put in additional expansion.
So you would do something on the side that had a bigger gap, but you would not do anything?
No, we would not do anything to that. I'm talking about the, the, the street itself. We would cut expansion in. So for instance, okay, so we would come in here at this location, Councilman Camp, and put in expansion. This is a street. This is a street. So we would do that. On a horizontal curve, like we were talking about in this case, where there's pushing here and the gap over here on the other side, if there was a driveway on the other side where it's pulling away, we would not do something. We would put our expansion on the ends of the curves to help.
Why wouldn't you put the expansion there? Because that's the, where the street's moving.
That is the property owner's responsibility to put the expansion there.
Are you saying even if it's in the street, that you wouldn't do anything to protect the integrity of the street? Before it touches the, or it may be touching, but you wouldn't cut out part of the, the street to prevent further damage?
Typically, our street, if there's street creep, let's just start with if there's street creep. I'm not talking about this particular instance, but if there's street creep, our street's usually bigger and winds. We do not see damage to our street to, to where we would need to put expansion in here.
Councilwoman Raybold, I'm sorry.
So Thomas, you're saying regardless of if it's street creep or if it's a freeze and thaw, it doesn't matter. It's, it's a homeowner's responsibility on that segment of the drive to do any and all repairs?
That's correct. Even if it's old age?
Would you allow a property owner to go into the street and cut out part of the street then to protect his or her driveway approach?
No, we would not because the, the appropriate place to do that is in the driveway, not in the street. To do it on the private property driveway, put that in.
But if the, just your street is creeped or moved that direction, it seems like the street's, I know it's right of way there, but nonetheless it's kind of intruding on the homeowner.
I'll leave that for the courts who have made decisions whether, whether that's the right thing or doing. I'm just going to give you what happens with the engineering part of it.
Councilwoman Raybold, were you finished?
Just a follow-up. So as a homeowner, if I put in that segment of the drive, where should I put the expansion joints then?
Typically, they put it in several places. They'll put it up against the street. You'll also probably put something up next to your garage too so that the compression will happen there before it actually gets into a, a foundation wall or a garage slab.
So when your investigators were out there, did they notice an absence of the expansion joint? Or was the expansion joint put in incorrectly or in the wrong segment or?
We did not note any damage in the brickwork at the front of the house or in the slab that would indicate that the drive was pressing, pressing against the residence.
Well, I think, beg your pardon, but the driveway, there is no expansion joint left between the driveway and my drive, in the garage. And there is no expansion.
Point of order.
You can see.
Point of order. The witnesses don't talk to each other in front of the council.
That was my fault. I should have, yeah, handled that. I think Councilman Eskridge, did you have some questions?
Yeah, just a, a follow-up question, engineering question, Thomas. So typical residential street, how thick would that be? And how thick would a driveway typically be?
A typical residential street is six to seven inches on a typical residential. Driveways can be anywhere between five and six, I'm going to guess, is what most people go for. So I try to get by with four.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this agenda item? Would you like to make a rebuttal statement?
Yes, I would. The fact that the entire driveway has moved over an inch and a half does not, to me, indicate that it was expansion and contraction from the weather. It's street creep. That's basically it. I mean, I've never seen frost and thaw move this way. It's usually up and down. And the other part of that, when the, when the sidewalk and the mudjacking, you cannot mudjack down. You can only mudjack up to level the sidewalk. And that's what I did at my expense too. And that was several years ago. So I guess if you're not liable, you're not liable. But I just want to clear the record. It is street creep.
Thank you for your testimony. Would anyone else like to address the city council on claims pending against the city? Thank you. Teresa, can we move to our next agenda item?
Yes, next would be five B, declaring the official intent of the city to reimburse certain expenses in connection with acquiring, constructing, equipping, and furnishing parking improvements of the city from the proceeds of bonds issued by the city.
I'm Brandon Kaufman, finance director for the city. You have a resolution here before you that's declaring an intent to reimburse the city from bond proceeds to be, that'll be issued in the future in connection with these parking acquisition, construction, and improvements. So on September tenth, the council approved the purchase of property located at Fourteenth Street between M and M and the parking garage and land located at thirteen eighteen M Street. In order, so we're at a point where the city is going, going to start issuing funds basically for the acquisition of property starting in November, but we're not at a point though yet to issue bonds for that. So due to basically internal revenue code regulations, in order for the city to reimburse itself from those bond proceeds, we have to issue basically this resolution of intent to reimburse those funds. So this would give us basically the flexibility, the option to reimburse the city from bond proceeds in the future for the, the parking garage for the acquisition of this property.
Councilwoman Gaylor Baird?
Thank you for bringing this forward. I had some questions earlier. Just could you clarify how standard or typical or atypical this kind of a practice is? Has this been done before?
Sure, I looked, I, I just looked over the past ten years. It looks like the city's done this about twenty times. So it is typical when you're starting a project in advance of actually issuing funds for that project.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Would anyone in the audience like to testify on this agenda item? Thank you. Teresa, what's our next item?
Next is item five C, approving an agreement between the Parks and Rec Department and the Lincoln Parks and Recreation Foundation, establishing the mutual responsibilities and understandings in providing facilities and programs through fundraising activities, securing grant funds, donor stewardship, and volunteer recruitment for a four-year term.
Good afternoon. Lynn Johnson with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. This essentially is renewal of a cooperative agreement that we've had between the department and the foundation for a number of years. The first agreement was approved in two thousand and eleven. Most of the provisions have remained the same. The provisions that remain the same, the, the foundation will conduct fundraising to support programs and facilities of the Parks and Recreation Department. It's the responsibility of the foundation to manage donated funds and to also manage the relationships with donors. The foundation annually provides a copy of its audit to the department. The department provides meeting space for the foundation. The department also provides facilities for foundation events. And one of the provisions of the agreement is that, excuse me, funds raised by the foundation will supplement but not supplant city funds. There's a couple of changes in, in this agreement and they essentially reflect current practice. One of those is that for each one of the endowment funds that the foundation manages, we cooperatively work with the foundation board to develop a fund statement that, that guides how the proceeds of those funds are to be expended. The development of that fund statement is done cooperatively. The fund statement then goes to the foundation board for review and approval. And the other is that when we engage in fundraising activities and when there are multi-year pledges anticipated, we have cooperatively developed a pledge statement form or a pledge form that's used for those donations. Should note that there are. Should note that there are a couple of additional agreements between the city and the foundation. One of those is for lease of the foundation's office space that's located with the Parks and Recreation Administration Office, excuse me. And then there is also a, another agreement that is for management of city funds for endowment purposes. Um, and I should note that Maggie Stuckey, who is the Executive Director of Lincoln Parks Foundation, is here this afternoon, and I know that either Maggie or I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Councilman Camp?
Yes, on, on the Challenge Grant Fund, what are the parameters that would, it within the governing documents that would dictate what matches can be done? In other words, is it a 50/50, or can it vary, or what exactly are the parameters?
That's the next agenda item, but I'd be happy to, to address that question if you'd like. Or, or we can wait and do it with the next agenda item.
I skipped ahead accidentally.
Other questions from the council? Would anyone in the chamber like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing no one, Teresa, we'll go to that.
All right, next is 5D, approving an agreement between the Lincoln Parks and Rec Foundation and the city, establishing the Community Challenge Grant Fund to match private gifts for renovation or replacement of existing park and recreation facilities.
Good afternoon again, Lynn Johnson with Lincoln Parks Recreation. As the city council knows, um, there was a million dollars that was appropriated as part of the current biennial budget for the purpose of establishing Challenge Grant Funds. Uh, the intent is to match private donations for renovation, rehabilitation, or replacement of existing parks and recreation facilities. And, and I think the important note there is that this is for existing facilities, and not new facilities, or facilities that would provide new recreation opportunities. Um, the agreement that is before the council this afternoon essentially authorizes the transfer of those funds to the Lincoln Parks Foundation to be managed. Um, the funds, as I noted, are inten- are intended to be used for repair and replacement of existing facilities, that they're intended to leverage private donations for that purpose. Uh, the agreement says that any distribution from the Challenge Grant Fund should be a minimum of $100,000, so the intent is that these are large projects. Um, the other intent is that this is forward-looking, so we're trying to, uh, raise private funds that will, uh, alleviate, I think, the city from, from future expenses. Uh, some of these projects could be included in, in a future, uh, quality-of-life bond issue. We've talked about the idea of a quality-of-life bond issue to address repair and replacement of existing facilities. As the city council knows, we have a gap in the funding that we have, uh, to maintain, or to, to do repair and replacement projects. Um, and so the intent of this is that by raising funds, we may reduce that need in the future. Um, the role of the foundation is to manage these funds, we are, we're to cooperatively develop a fund statement regarding how the funds will be expended, and Mr. Camp, I think that question about the matching will be included in that fund statement. That fund statement that will then be adopted by the Lincoln Parks Foundation Board of Directors. Um, and it's really, I think, the role of the Parks Foundation Board of Directors is to act in a fiduciary role to determine the best utilization of the Challenge Grant Funds, kind of based on prior practices. So, we have not set what the fa- what, what the factors are, it's probably gonna, uh, vary by project. Um, one of the questions you may have is what kinds of projects might this support? I went and I, I, I reviewed the department's 10-year facility plan, we update that every two years. There are 10 projects within that document right now that have a projected cost of more than $200,000. That doesn't include projects that are really pavement rehabilitation, or hard surface rehabilitation. Kind of some key projects within that are replacement of the Air Park Recreation Center, renovation of the Cascade Fountain, or the Retired Teachers Fountain at 27th and Capitol Parkway, renovation of, of Cooper Park, Lincoln's oldest park, and then, as you may know, we've developed a master plan for renovation of a series of parks, Irvingdale Stransky and Rudge. They're adjacent parks, and there are some renovation projects that are identified within that overall master plan. Uh, so, at this point, we think that it's probably a combination of those projects that these funds would be directed towards. Um, we need to have some more detailed discussion about, um, how we would organize the fundraising efforts for those projects, but I, I hope that gives you kind of a sense of, of the, the projects that these funds might be used for. Um, again, Maggie Stuckey, uh, who's the Executive Director of Lincoln Parks Foundation, is here this afternoon, and again, I know that either she or I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilman Camp?
So, Mr. Johnson, within this measure, this, this allows the transfer of the million dollars, but essentially, if I understood your testimony, there's no, the city and the city council have no, uh, way to say what type of match we would like to have accompany that money?
There is not a provision in the, in the agreement to that point. Um, and as I said, the, the agreement relies on the, the Lincoln Parks Foundation Board of Directors to try to use their best judgment in determining the appropriate match, and really to try to leverage the funds to the extent possible. So, as the, uh, agreement was presented to the council this afternoon, there is not specific guidance in there as to whether it's a one-for-one match, or what the matching requirement would be.
Well, I greatly appreciate what the foundation does, but just to give a check for a million dollars with no parameters on it, I think, it, it doesn't accomplish what we wanted to have in this measure, in this million dollars, at least from my standpoint, that if you do that, then the foundation, uh, you know, you say we did say it has to be a 50/50 match or something, at least that, then the foundation board, and, and I'm not taking issue with the board, or Ms. Stuckey, it's just a matter of, uh, something to rely on, say, we can't go beyond this, you know, this is what we have to do, and working with donors, because otherwise they might say, well, I'll give you 10 cents on the dollar, or something, and, um, and especially when you're talking about repair and maintenance, those are, uh, more difficult measures versus a new structure, and, but I, I just, I have some concerns transferring that money without some strings attached on what we would expect on a minimal matching.
I understand the concern. It's probably really gonna depend on the project, because some project's gonna be easier to fundraise for than others, and so that match provision may vary by project. In fact, I would anticipate that it will probably vary by project. Um, the, on average, the city funds that have leveraged private funds, I think, right now, the average is that city funds have been about 19% of an overall project. It's varied by project, for example, I happen to know the Woods Park Tennis Center, that project, city funds were about 25% of the overall project, so for every dollar that the city put in, the private sector put in three. Um, there have been projects that the city has put in a lesser percentage than that. Um, and I th- I think this document was drafted with the intent to really allow the department to work with the foundation to determine kind of, um, the parameters of how the matching funds would be used, based on individual projects, and kind of the unique aspects of individual projects. I do understand the concern, though.
Other comments from the council? Would anyone else in the audience like to testify on this agenda item? Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Teresa, um...
All right, next, or...
Could we, could we have Jocelyn come up?
Sure.
Jocelyn Golden, Assistant City Attorney.
Thanks for being here.
Sure.
As the Law Department Liaison to the Parks and Rec Department, could you just talk a little bit about the work you did drafting this to mirror the intent of the council's direction through the biennial budget process?
Sure, um, I, I worked with Larian and Lynn and Maggie Stuckey at the Parks Foundation to put together this agreement. Um, this agreement is modeled on an agreement that, um, city council's approved before for transferring certain endowment funds to the Parks Foundation, um, and so I, I kind of mirrored that in the drafting of this agreement, um, kind of provides some guidelines for what types of projects the funds could be used for, um, what kind of guidance there is for investment, um, for administrative fees. Um, and then we also, um, put in an additional requirement that there be a fund statement that is approved between the Parks Department and the foundation, that just provides some guidance for how these funds are going to be used. Um, and then, in paragraph six, um, that was kind of the paragraph that kind of made it unusual to this agreement, where we were really trying to target, um, Parks Foundation and the Parks Department, kind of providing, um, certain projects that they're looking, kind of inviting the community to come in and provide funds to try and help fundraise, and then Parks Foundation and, uh, Parks Department Director, kind of in their discretion, say, look, the, this is an adequate amount of funds that have been fundraised for this project, we're gonna go forward and take city funds wi- with that project, and, and roll that into, we're gonna go ahead and proceed with that project. I think Lynn talked about, um, the 10-year, um, facilities plan, um, that there's certain projects identified, but it's not necessarily that, you know, there's a set date on when those projects are gonna proceed, so, really, it's kind of, once this agreement is approved, and that million dollars is transferred to the foundation, then the foundation and the Parks Department can take action to try and see what kind of interest there is in the community to, um, fundraise for those, offer those funds up, um, see how, if that matching is adequate, and then perhaps proceed with that project, but I'll certainly defer to Lynn on, you know, his judgment, or, or how the Parks Department and Parks Foundation work together on those types of projects, 'cause I'm usually more on the legal side of things.
Councilwoman Gaylord Bear, do you have additional questions?
And do you want to talk about the reporting requirement to the council, a little bit in paragraph eight?
Um, the reporting, so there will be an annual audit, and this is similar to what we do with the endowment funds that were transferred to the foundation, that there's, there's some requirements. Um, the foundation also has to provide copies of its tax returns and accounting or investment funds, when requested in writing. Um, and then there's also going to be a biannual report that's produced to the city council that will kind of correspond with the biannual budget regarding what types of parks, projects are chosen to be funded by the grant fund. Um, in the prior agreement that was discussed, um, the, kind of the overarching agreement between the Parks Department and the Parks Foundation, which, um, has been in place, you know, the four years prior to that, there's also some reporting requirements in that agreement too, so, um, certainly, Parks Foundation, Parks Department work very closely together on the projects.
Thank you.
Sure.
Can we have the Parks Foundation Director come up and...
Before that, I think Councilwoman Raybold had some questions.
Sure.
As I read it, in paragraph four, it, it's, the parameters on the projects that have been approved are already in the CIP for 2018 through 2019, and then through, on through 2023, 2024, or as amended, and if the CIP gets amended, does, doesn't that come before the city council for any amendments to that?
That's correct.
So, from what I understand, the parameter of any of the projects are already defined in the, in the CIP.
That's correct.
And you're setting that minimum threshold of $100,000 as a matching opportunity for any one of those projects listed in the CIP, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Councilman Camp?
What, uh, what, what is the amount that the Parks Foundation gets as an administrative fee?
I believe it's 1%.
Is that 1% per year?
1% for any fees that they have that they manage. I, I think that's per year, I don't, Maggie, annual, yes.
So, if there's a million dollars, and say it goes for three years, and none of it is dispersed, there'd be a...
Thirty thousand.
Ten, pardon me?
Thirty thousand dollars.
So, 10,000 per year?
Right.
So, it eats up the...
Right, and, and we, I mean, we, we've done research on, you know, what other foundations do as far as what their administrative fee, um, and 1% is, is fairly low compared to other foundations are, um, that we've looked at.
I just, I just wanted to...
Sure.
Reiterate what it is. And the, the audits we get are after the project's been done, essentially, so our review is after the fact, is it not?
That's correct.
Ms. Stuckey, would you please help us?
Sure. Good afternoon, I'm Maggie Stuckey with the Lincoln Parks Foundation, it's good to see you all. We're really excited about the opportunity to use these funds to get some of these projects that have been sitting on these lists, um, off the ground, and, and renovate and, and back into service in the system, so, um, we've already had several conversations about some of the projects Lynn brought up, the Cascade Fountain in particular, I think there is interest in moving ahead with renovation of that project, or of that fountain. Um, this would be a huge opportunity to go to donors and, and talk about how we could leverage, um, funds from the city to, to get that project moving, so, I'm happy to answer any questions. It, uh, worked on the agreement with Jocelyn and Lynn and Larian, and, um, we're, we're ready to go, and ready to fundraise for these important facilities.
Thank you for being here, I just wanted to address one of the concerns that was raised about the potential ratio between the public funds and the private funds, can you talk about your approach and how you would work with these funds to, to maximize and stretch the taxpayer dollars?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that, that intent of these funds is absolutely to be matching them, I expect very little problem in, in doubling the funds that we bring in from the city for these projects. Um, we have a lot of donors who are really interested in, in getting behind project that the city supports, and, um, having matching funds available when we're fundraising is a huge deal, so, um, it will certainly be something we're, we're leading with, and, um, we, we did go back and forth about putting a number in, to be real frank with you, I think, um, I started high, and we kind of moved things around, and, but as Lynn discussed, every project will be different, the availability for matching funds for a project like Irving Stransky Rudge, as compared to the Air Park Rec Center, every one is different, every donor base is different for our project, so, um, we certainly appreciate the flexibility.
And part of the parameters is that this could be potentially for one project, or for several projects?
Absolutely.
So, it's meant to try to incentivize those in the community who would like to see, uh, their project get across the finish line, um, move more quickly rather than slowly, because it could be directed elsewhere if, if action doesn't take place quickly.
Yeah, certainly, and there are several projects on the list that have been in that, in that list for a long time, so we do have some energized donors that this could really, um, be turnkey for us, so.
Councilman Christianson?
Hopefully, for Ms. Golden, you can answer me this question, I'm looking at item, provision number three, administrative fee, and John touched on it, that right now, it says 1% annual administrative fee for management of the grant fund. I'm assuming this fund would also be invested while it's sitting there, and money would be coming in through interest payments? And then it says that we can, that, that administrative fee can be increased if the Foundation Board of Directors decides it should be, and the mayor signs off on it. Why do it this way, instead of just let the city keep the money, invest the money, and give it to you when you need it? Isn't that better for the, you know, for the administration of the funds? I mean, we're not gonna be giving up 10%, or 1% a year, $10,000 a year, or you'd be subject to the, to the board that decides, yes, we want to go ahead and increase that to 3%, or, you know, why can't the city just keep it, manage it inside the Parks and, Parks Department, and then provide it as matching money comes in?
I think typically, the city doesn't, you know, if it's funds that's held by the city, I don't think we have some sort of investment strategy to try and, you know, if, even if we set it aside, that's my understanding, to say, okay, it's a million dollars in a different account at the city, and so let's invest in, try and, you know, make a little bit of money before we're able to, you know, utilize it for whatever project. Uh, and I think we did talk about the 1%, I don't know if you want to talk about how that might be invested by the Parks Foundation, like who your, your investment company?
Yeah, well, the, having access to these funds is gonna be important, and so we won't be putting them into an endowment, but it'll be living in our, in our general funds, so, there are some short-term investment options that we use on a regular basis, three-month, six-month investment, um, opportunities with our, with our banking partners, so, um, that's certainly the intent. I, I think expecting us to, um, need this money in the next six months is not really likely, so I would imagine as soon as it comes over, it would go into one of those accounts, that would be my intent.
That makes my point for me, why doesn't the city just keep this money, maintain it, collect the interest on investments, and provide it to your organization as needed? Because we do a pretty good job of keeping, our, our Finance Department does a pretty good job of keeping track of our money, so, but just giving it to, to, to your organization, and having you skim off 1% a year off the top, and then also have the ability to increase that amount, um, I, I have concerns about that.
I guess what I'd like just to address that concern is that, uh, these are city projects that the foundation would typically not go out and raise money for, so in a sense, it is payment for services rendered, so, uh, you know, Ms. Stuckey would not be normally going out and trying to, uh, raise funds for the Air Park Rec Center necessarily without, um, those funds at the foundation, so, this is a way of both accelerating these projects, and instead of having them sit undone at the city, take them to be made into public-private partnerships, and if in fact she is able to match a $200,000 project, um, with private dollars, then that fee is paid for in essence by the private fundraising, so I, I think it's a win-win for the foundation and the city.
Councilman Camp, then Councilwoman Lamb.
Uh, Mr. Johnson mentioned...
Mr. Johnson mentioned that there've been some projects, and he mentioned a figure of city funds at nineteen percent or whatever. What, I mean, if you had a, a minimum threshold of fifty percent or more match, does that create concerns?
I'll remind you, I'm, I'm still pretty new in this seat. In, in my mind, that doesn't create concern. I don't think that's going to be a problem for us to reach, but I appreciate the experience that Lynn and Jocelyn bring to the table in terms of fundraising that the foundation has done over the years. And so, in our conversations, that's why, that's why that percentage wasn't included.
And please understand, my questions are just to get the facts out, and I'm not...
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I, I think everything's run well in the past. I just feel, as we get into discussion here, I feel somewhat like we're not having a certain amount of parameters here to guide this, and despite using past agreements, if they've just been open-ended, or now learning that the Foundation Board could increase the percentage it keeps out of the funds, or above that one percent, I just think there need to be some parameters there that are in this resolution that would go along with the, the amount. I mean, I, I'd probably like to see this put on pending for a short period to review some of those, and it's nothing outlandish, it's just I think we need to protect the citizens, because this is money that's being donated there, and just to have it. And I think that'd be good for your board, because then it knows a little bit more, and it can also say, these are the, the do's and don'ts I have, that we have, that we can work with, and perhaps help on the fundraising. And I, I'd like to hear more history of other projects and see what the percentage has been. So, I, I just threw out the fifty percent, just for some number, but...
I appreciate your feedback.
Yeah.
Counselman Eskridge, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Counselwoman Lamb.
Thank you. Just to follow up on Counselman Christensen's question about leaving the funds in the city, these, this fund came out of the people's savings, the reserve fund. Do we have an idea of what it was earning while it was in that fund? I, I don't see Brandon's, I wonder if Lynn has an idea of what this was earning when it was in the people's reserve fund, before the million came out?
Unfortunately, I do not. We'd have to ask the Finance Department.
Okay, and I don't think they're here anymore.
During the budget hearing, the number of eight percent was brought up. Eighty thousand dollars a year.
Okay, I think that, okay.
That was brought up during, during the budget hearings.
Right. I think that was brought up in relation to the, to the pension, but...
That's what the pension assumes.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you.
Counselman Eskridge.
I would like to...
Yes. So, I, I have a good pleasure for another month or so to, to be on a, a community foundation board, and, and that has been a great learning experience and, and honor to, to be involved with them. But what, what I've found is that that organization has, through the management of, of the funds that they have, they've, they've been able to increase their portfolio significantly, while every year giving millions and millions of dollars to community organizations. And what I'm getting at here is, is that's the purpose that we had for these funds, that the, these money, this money was to go for parks, properties, parks' needs that currently are being underfunded. If those monies are earning interest for the Parks Foundation, to be used for parks' projects, that's what we want. That's what we intended to have happen here. I, I think, you know, I, I don't have a problem with that at all. I, I hope that we can leverage it as best possible, so we can make, make more of our city's projects funded. I thought of a few other ones, as you were up here. And so, I, yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of this. Thank you.
Other comments from the council? We're still in the public hearing portion. Is anyone in the audience who would like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing no one coming forward?
All right, if not, we can vote on these items. We'll go back to five A. The report of new impending claims was introduced by Christensen.
So, moved. Second. You have a motion by Counselman Christensen, and a second by Counselman Eskridge. Discussion, Counselman Eskridge.
Yes, thanks. Both individuals presented, you know, good arguments of frustrations that they've had with, with their personal losses, and, but the problem is that in order for us to be responsible or liable, there has to be some demonstrable negligence on the part of the city, and, and I don't think in either case that there was that established.
Other comments on the motion? Counselman Camp.
Yeah, I agree with the Counselman Eskridge. I, I would further say that, especially in the case of Mr. Zerline, that how Public Works responds to situations like this, that perhaps we could review the policies, because the streets are our streets, and if it's tugging away from one side, and to the detriment there, and we know how many potholes or other changes in our infrastructure that need correction, that perhaps this could be something that early on, we would address in a different way, where we might cut out or something, or whatever. So, I will agree with the denial, but I really would encourage our administrative staff and Ms. Esposito to see if she and her department can review some procedures here.
Thank you, Counselman. Any other comments? Teresa, would you call the roll on that item?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item five B is declaring the official intent of the city to reimburse certain expenses in connection with acquiring, constructing, equipping, and furnishing parking improvements from the proceeds of bonds issued by the city, introduced by Christensen.
So, moved. Second. Motion by Counselman Christensen, second by Counselman Eskridge. Discussion, would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Oh.
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Camp?
No.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to two. Next is item five C, approving an agreement between Parks and Rec and the Lincoln Parks and Rec Foundation, establishing the mutual responsibilities and understandings in providing facilities and programs through fundraising activities, securing grant funds, donor stewardship, and volunteer recruitment for a four-year term, introduced by Christensen.
So, moved. Second. You have a motion by Counselman Christensen, second by Counselman Eskridge. Discussion, Counselman Camp.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to put item five C and five D on pending.
Second.
You have a motion by Counselman Camp. Is there a time?
I was trying to think of our calendar here.
And a, and a purpose, I guess.
Well, the, the purpose is, I, I'd like to see some fine-tuning of the agreements, and also the parameters to help the foundation operate, and, you know, this is a million dollars that's coming out of the city's cash reserves. And so, to me, that's sacred funds. We all want to see our parks and recreational facilities continue to be maintained and so forth, but I, just based upon the interaction we had here and the discussion during the public hearing time, I, I can't agree to giving this, transferring this money on that basis.
Counselwoman Gaylor Baird.
Just to be clear, five C and five D are not related items. Five C is renewal. Would you like to withdraw five C from that motion?
Well, I think the fact that five C talks about fundraising activities and all, that there's a, a certain relationship between them, and I, in no way am I trying to defeat them in any way. I just think we need to have a little bit better understanding of the parameters, I keep using that word, but just the, the parameters that would outline what our expectations are for this million dollars, and, but then that's the second measure.
But five C was, I mean, that's been an agreement since 2011, I believe, so it's, it is a separate agreement, just renewing the relationship between the Parks Foundation and the Parks Department. I understand you have an issue with the challenge grant, but that's item five D only.
Well, it, it, sometimes you need to review things, and although we've had it in place since 2011, it may be time to make some fine tuning.
Counselman Christensen?
I'm still looking for a time. How long you want this delayed for? Two weeks, a month, something?
Would it be appropriate for me to ask Mr. Johnson to forward it and say if, since we've combined these things? Come forward for a question, please.
Please.
I'm a little confused, and we're talking about five C and five D. Counselwoman Gaylor Baird pointed out that five C has been standing alone for a while. If we were to put that on pending, would that restrict the activities of Parks and Rec?
It, it doesn't restrict the activities. The current agreement has expired, and it expires this month, and so that was the intent to renew that agreement before it expired.
And this is a very similar agreement to what's in place between the Library Department and the Library Foundation, too. I mean, it's almost identical, except for the couple of additions that Lynn Johnson talked about, which I think are really good additions, which is that there has to be some sort of fund statement that's approved for any funds that are transferred to the Parks Foundation, and that there's also, for multi-year fundraising, that there be some sort of pledge form that is created and approved by both the Parks Department and Parks Foundation.
Counselman Christensen?
We, we, the question before us is, right now is to delay. Have you come up with a number? A date? November, what did we say, nineteenth? November nineteenth. Four weeks. Four weeks, okay. So, at this point, I move we divide the question, five C and five D.
Second, or you don't need a second?
I think he made a motion to divide, and we have a second on the motion to divide. So, now we, discussion on the motion to divide?
There's a delay, so the way, if the motion to divide passes, there are two separate votes, one to delay five C, and one to delay five D.
Discussion of the delay? Teresa, are you prepared?
The motion to divide is what's...
Motion to divide, excuse me, yes.
Well, I support that motion, because I don't see a need for us to, to delay five C. And I do think that five D can be amended by just, we had some heartburn about any additional adjustments to the annual administration fee. It says shall be approved by the Foundation Board of Directors and the mayor. I mean, we could easily insert that instead of mayor, city council, something that, to that effect, but I, I support the motion to divide.
I think, Counsel, Mr.?
Jeffrey Patrick, City Attorney. Under the council's rules, you can move to divide. There doesn't need to be a vote. The division happens, you vote, you move on.
Okay.
So, that might save a little bit of time.
All right. Thank you.
So, the motion is divided?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. So, now we have a divided motion to amend?
No, divided motion to delay.
Divided motion to delay.
Okay, wait, we've already divided that, it's already divided, and now we've got to vote.
Motion delay on five C.
Five C.
Yes. Counselwoman Lamb?
Yes, so, I'd like to visit with staff. I have a couple of questions on the first one, five C.
Counselman Christensen, thank you.
Thank you. So, on five C, as I look at just kind of the, the bullet points of what this agreement is about, and I realize it's been, it mirrors what's been in 2011, but a lot of things have changed since 2011, and so I'm wondering, basically, where it indicates that the department will provide meeting space for the use by the foundation, is there any indication that what meeting, what meeting space will be utilized? Has there been a traditional meeting space? Will that be the same? And what is the cost to the city?
Great question. Traditionally, the Parks Foundation uses the meeting spaces at the administration office. If you've been to our office, you know that there's a large meeting room, and then there's a smaller conference room. Those are the two spaces that typically the foundation uses. On occasion, for example, when we were partnering on the Irvingdale Stransky Rudge Master Plan, we used a meeting room at, at, at the Irving Recreation Center. But most generally, the foundation is using the, the meeting rooms in the administration office. There is no additional cost to the department when that happens. It, it, we're already paying the rent on that space as it is.
And what about the facilities we make available for the foundation events? Can you tell us kind of what time of, type of events they are, what kind of facilities, and the cost, if any, to the city?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. For a number of years, the foundation, for example, had a large kind of donor recognition event, and it's been in Sunken Gardens, it's been in the Rose Garden, it's been at Pinewood Bowl, it's actually been also at Union Plaza, and that has not happened in the past few years. We might go back and do that. The foundation also occasionally conducts fundraising meetings. For a number of years, we conducted fundraising meetings in Sunken Gardens. The cost is relatively nominal to the city. Sometimes it's some additional utility expenses, sometimes it's a little bit of staff time to deal with the trash that might be generated from the event. So, there is a little bit of expense associated with those events, but generally, they're events that are either raising money, or they're for donor stewardship, recognizing the, the generosity of donors at past events. So, I think there's really a, a benefit that comes back to the city from those events.
And so, the foundation generally handles the bulk of the expenses unless we have utilities or additional staff for cleaning?
Yeah, that's correct. If they do, for example, when, when the donor stewardship events happen, there would be live music, there would be food, there would be beverage, there would be decorations, all of that was funded by the foundation. And so, the city is just providing the space and making the space available.
So, and then this last one, funds secured by the foundation will supplement and not supplant governmental funding of the department. Does that include the city's governmental funding, or is that referred just to state or federal funding?
That refers to the city funding, and that's really, as, when the foundation was established, the Foundation Board essentially determined that their responsibility was to try to improve facilities, or, or improve, they used to call it margin of quality funding. And so, the foundation never wanted to be in the role of funding routine mowing, funding routine snow removal, those kinds of things. So, when the foundation engages in fundraising, it's really to improve a city facility beyond what it is today.
And so, then I guess, I, I kind of have a question that may also be for finance, because if we, if these are for programs that, if you have something, for instance, like the grant that we're talking about, for programs that are in the CIP, would those, would there be any supplanting in those instances?
It's a good question. The projects that are identified in the CIP today, that the challenge grant funds, for example, could be used for, we don't have any existing city funds identified for those. They're identified in the CIP as potential future projects. I think most of those projects are identified that other funds or private funds would be, be used for that. So, I, I don't, I, I can't envision that the challenge grant funds would be supplanting those funds, or any, any matching funds, any matching private funds would be supplanting city funds in those instances.
You, you can't imagine, but do we know for sure?
I'm, I'm fairly certain, yeah. I just, when I think back, I don't have the CIP in front of me, but as I, as I think back to the, the major projects that are in the CIP, we don't have an existing funding source identified at this point.
Thank you.
Just additional discussion on the...
We're talking about delays.
Delay, yes.
On five C.
Five C. Yes. Okay. I am a little confused, and I think there's some other confusion. I think we should stop for a second. I'd like to, I'd like to take a five-minute delay, just to look at where we are and make sure I understand what's going on.
Okay.
I'm going to declare the city council in recess for five minutes while we, I'm still a little confused. Thank you. Five-minute recess.
I'm ready.
So everybody ready? We, I, we now reconvene the city council? We are, I think we're ready for our vote on motion to delay for item 5C.
Okay. This is to place it on pending until November nineteenth. Eskridge?
No.
Gaylor Baird?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Shob?
No.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
No.
Motion lost, two to five.
Okay. Now we need to motion, vote on 5C as it originally came to us, correct?
Correct.
Actually, in the proper order, we have to go on the delay is still on the table.
Second delay of the?
The second delay. I have.
Councilman Christiansen?
Comment on this. I do have some problems with the language as it exists, especially in paragraph three. I would like to see some modification to that language. Now, I don't really like doing amendments from the dais, even though they may be simple. And you're talking to the guy, that last time we did an amendment from the dais, I did it, okay? But I would prefer, if we had a delay, to work on the language, get everybody in agreement on it, and then vote on it. So I'm going to support this delay, because I think it can be productive. And the delay, I don't think is going to be harmful to the end product.
Councilwoman Raybold?
I am not going to support the delay, because I think the modifications are very minor that would take into some of the elements that John had concerns about. So I am not going to support a delay, because I think we can do it from the dais, because I think they're two very simple solutions.
Councilman Camp?
Well, I would just reaffirm, I think the four-week delay is prudent to do. We, as stewards of the city's money, the taxpayers' money, as you recall, the million dollars reduced our cash reserves, which is very unusual. In fact, we've never done that before. And so I'm full agreement with the challenge grant concept and so forth. But as we looked at it, and in some of the discussion we had today, I feel that doing it and then coming back to the dais with the revised measure is much better. I concur with what Mr. Christiansen said about not legislating from the dais or amending like that.
Would you consider a friendly amendment of one-week delay? Because I don't think it's, I don't think this is a four-week delay type of element that we're talking.
I'd like to interject something, actually.
Councilwoman Gaylor Baird?
At our last directors and organization, not our last one, the previous two today, I pointed out that this item was on our agenda. I wanted to make sure that everyone saw that the follow-up to a policy decision made during the budget, well, not a unanimous policy decision, but a policy decision that was made, that the details were worked out and were available for everyone's review. And I would have expected that if there were any problems, questions, or concerns, I would have heard about them prior to this voting session. And so I'm deeply disappointed that there hasn't been better communication about any requests for change, because we don't have to do this from the dais. We could have worked this out prior to this meeting. You know, Roy, if your concern is that you'd like it to come to council instead of the mayor for any adjustment to the fee, I'm open to making that motion to amend today and voting on it. I don't have any problem with that. John, if your issue is with the match, we've heard from Ms. Stuckey that she doesn't have a problem with a fifty-fifty match. So if we want to make an amendment that the private contribution to any one of these projects selected for the community challenge needs to be a minimum fifty percent of the total cost, I'm happy to make that motion. It, I think it reflects the spirit of what we're trying to do here. But I do think some flexibility is helpful, because as you recall, these projects are entirely the responsibility of the city today. And any money we get towards them from the private sector is a win, because that money isn't there today. And it isn't being sought by the department today from the private sector, because that's, that's a little bit outside the scope of what they do. I don't think we need a delay.
Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. Well, I, I will support a delay. In addition to the things that have been mentioned, I do have, I would like to have some questions answered from finance on the amount of earnings this money is getting or was getting as part of the people's reserve funds, because this is an unusual, that it was pulled down for that. Also, while I appreciate the spirit of being willing to do the delays up here today, I don't know that that's the wisest course of action to thoroughly discuss through each of those, I'm sorry, the modifications, each of those modifications. And I think it would be better if we did have, we were fully versed in those. And I recognize that as part of the advisory committee that the councilwoman obviously has lived with this quite a bit longer than the rest of us. And so I just, I believe that there is a delay. And for me to support it, I believe that I need to know a little bit more. And I think that we need to probably discuss more, any changes that are going to be made, whether they reflect Mr. Councilman Camp's or Councilman Christiansen's ideas. And also, I would like the questions answered on the financial part of it, which I don't think we can do with a modification.
Do you think we need four weeks to get that resolved? That seems, there just seems like four simple questions.
Councilman Christiansen?
I'm going to second her, Councilwoman Raybold's motion to change the delay to one week.
I don't think that was really a motion, more of just kind of like a?
Friendly suggestion?
We've been advised by our attorney that friendly amendments are not quite appropriate, the thing to do.
How about, what's the difference? How about if I make a motion that we delay two weeks?
I don't think that's necessary.
And that's a motion.
That's a motion, yes, which is waiting for a second. Wait, yeah, wait, wait, we got a?
You got a one-week motion?
No, actually, I have a four-week motion by John.
The motion is to place on pending till November nineteenth. And unless John accepts a friendly amendment, we need to vote on it and move on.
There are no such things as friendly amendment.
Could we do two weeks?
I think we have to vote and deny, and then come back with a new motion. Mr. Repatrick?
I'm not accepting, I mean, I'll stick with my four weeks.
If John wants to change it to two weeks, then we can do that.
That's acceptable. He can just, yeah, we don't have to worry about no more motions. We can just take his, adjustment of his original motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll just say again, the reason, you know, I would be much more accepting of a delay if there had been a concern raised prior to this voting session by my colleagues, if there had been questions raised.
That's not appropriate to comment on, Lirin.
Actually, it's, I'm providing my rationale for not supporting the delay. And so if, because it's coming at the eleventh hour with not specific requests for changes, I've offered some potential compromises, but the insistence on delay is there. I just, I just don't see the reason for it. It seems like we're rehashing a policy decision that was made during the budget rather than the actual substance of this agreement.
This was not part of the budget, other than the appropriation of the million dollars out of the cash reserves of the city, and labeled as a challenge grant, period. So I call, call the question.
I've heard from Councilman Camp to call the question, so the question is for a two-week delay. And we have, I'm sorry, I don't know who made the motion in section, but you've got?
It was made by Camp, seconded by Lamb.
Thank you. Two-week delay. Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
No.
Gaylor Baird?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Shob?
No.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Motion lost, three to four.
Okay, now where are we? We're back?
Back to the main motion on 5C.
Five.
D.
D.
No, no, we have to go, we've finished with the dividing.
Okay.
Now we go back to the original.
5C, okay.
5C.
Is there any, I don't remember who made, there was a motion in second?
I made the motion.
And it was seconded by Eskridge.
Any discussion on 5C? Any additional discussion on 5C? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
No.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to two.
Now 5D.
Next is 5D, the agreement introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird, seconded by Councilman Christiansen. Discussion?
And we have a motion to amend, number one, to accept a substitute agreement.
I'll move motion to amend, number one.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird, seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Motion to amend.
The motion to amend is to replace with this, substitute the replacement agreement that takes into account the Parks Foundation input.
Other, Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you.
Was there a second?
Yes.
So I think there are some other changes and modifications that need to be made. I'm not supportive of this motion to amend as it, as it stands, and disappointed that we're not delaying in order to make, to make better use of the time and really look at what is happening, what the proposals are for sending the people's money away from the city into a foundation to pay them to manage funds that, and not be able to answer questions about the financial aspect of that as far as the earnings and so forth. And so I will not support either the amendment or the underlying, the underlying, well, the substitute amendment or the underlying motions.
Councilman Camp?
Jeff, can we make a motion, redo the motion for a two-week delay?
To reconsider?
Can you make another motion, I guess, to delay?
Only if you voted for it.
Now, since we have an amend?
I think you can. I'm not sure it'd be a word at this time, because you have a pending amendment to the resolution.
Well, it's also the substitute, which is even a further reason to delay, because that's been interjected in the process here in Parks Department.
I think we had to approve the substitution first, then we could possibly make a?
I think the chair can allow a motion to delay if the chair determines that it's not dilatory. In other words, if the chair comes to the conclusion that it may well pass the motion to delay for two weeks, then I think that he can accept that as being in order at this stage with a pending amendment.
I'd make that motion.
Well?
Second.
Wait.
For two weeks.
Second.
Second.
I, I'm, I, I want to acknowledge the urge. But if, I would prefer to make the, work on the motion to amend first and then address the motion delay. Would that be out of order?
I, I think you have to rule on whether you think it's dilatory. What I would suggest to the chair is certainly would be dilatory if you had, every time there's an amendment, there's a motion to delay. So, you're voting on delaying time after time. It may well be that since this is only the second motion to delay, the chair may conclude that it's not dilatory and allow it.
I'm struggling with dilatory now.
I have a question. Councilman Christensen, would you be acceptable a week?
Well, I guess if, if progress or if we weren't able to conclude it in a week, we could extend it another week then. Okay, I would go with a week. I don't know if my second would do that.
Second?
So, the motion, a second to delay...
One week.
One week. The motion before it was amended. It has not been amended, correct?
Correct.
Additional discussion on the motion to delay. Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one.
So, five delay is delayed until next week.
Correct. All right. Next then, our public hearing ordinances, second reading. Item 6A, text amendment 18009, amending Lincoln Municipal Code Section 27.72.110 to create exceptions to the height requirements in all zoning districts where private schools are permitted to allow private school light poles to exceed the district height limit up to a height of 100 feet.
Hi, thank you. Zach Kassebaum, Superintendent of Lincoln Christian Schools. Z A C H K A S S E B A U M. We're 5801, South 84th Street. I think I remembered everything that I was supposed to say.
Thank you, Mr. Kassebaum. You did.
As a person that works with boards, thank you for your service and the work that goes unseen there. And also, thank you to the City Planning and Zoning Commission that lent their wisdom and guidance to even get us here. We're just here to show our support of the text amendment to, to municipal code allowing a change in height requirement for light poles on our school property. And in this case, that would be for a football field. And in order to, to have a football field, we would need to exceed that height limit that currently exists.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Councilwoman Raybold?
And I know that all the same regulations against light trespass apply even with the increase in height. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. And the change with the way lighting is done now, there's not, not nearly the same amount of spillage as there used to be. So, it can be centralized more to one area.
Terrific. Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Would anyone in the audience like to testify on this item? Thank you, Mr. Kassebaum.
Thank you very much.
Teresa, our next item?
SB, amending Chapter 12.08 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to parks, general rules and regulations by amending Section 12.08.010 to add a definition for park flyer model aircraft, adding Section 12.08.295 to allow the operation of park flyer model aircraft in designated areas.
Lynn Johnson, Lincoln Parks Recreation. This item came to us actually earlier this summer, the Parks Recreation Department earlier this summer. There are some park flyer model aircraft enthusiasts who are interested in the ability to fly those aircraft in park, in park areas. Today, the gas-powered model aircraft that we're probably all familiar with are not allowed to be flown in parks. And I think that that ordinance predar, that, that, it is an ordinance, predates me. And I think the concern there was probably noise and weight and the potential for either damage to property or, or individuals if one of those planes were to hit them. The park flyer model aircraft are really kind of an advancement in technology. They're light, they weigh two pounds or less, they operate with an electric motor. By our definition, they would not have a camera associated with them. And they fly at 60 miles an hour or less, although the people who fly them tell us that they actually fly at much less than that. So, they're safer to operate than they used to be. The proposed ordinance that is before you would create a definition for park flyer model aircraft within Section 12.08010. And the other thing it would do, it would establish a new provision that would allow for flying a park flyer model aircraft in designated park areas. And we would work with the Parks Recreation Advisory Board to identify and determine those areas. Those areas would be approved by executive order. Right now, we think that there would probably be at least initially an area in Mahoney Park and an area in Pioneer's Park that would be designated. There would be rules and regulations that would be drafted and adopted by executive order for use of those park flyers in those areas. In general, the park flyers need to be flown within sight of somebody. They should be flown generally within the boundaries of the designated areas. Anybody under 14 years of age flying one of these should be under the supervision of the responsible adult. And a park flyer model aircraft couldn't be used to harass wildlife or harass other people in the park. This comes to you with a unanimous recommendation of approval from the Parks Recreation Advisory Board. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. Thanks, Lynn. Is this going to change at all the ability of hobbyists to fly the gas-powered?
This, the, the gas-powered model aircraft would not, would continue to not be allowed to be flown in park areas. And the other thing that I should have mentioned is this does not include drones. Because of FAA regulations, the use of drones is kind of its own challenge, and we need to sort through that. We intend to come back, I think, at some point and look at, at what provisions could be allowed to allow drones to be flown in parks. We haven't done that yet. We've got, we've got a lot of sorting through to understand the kind of what the FAA guidelines or the impact of the FAA guidelines on what that would have on allowing drones to be flown in park areas.
I think Councilman Eskridge had a question. Then, Councilman Camp?
Yeah. Lynn, are geese considered wildlife? Because we got a lot of them at Pioneer's Park.
You know, if they, if the geese happen to be disturbed by that, that's probably not a bad thing.
I don't get it.
A lot of geese at Pioneer's Park, yeah.
There are. If it was intentional, I think it would be of concern. But if it's, if it's a kind of a secondary impact, that might be a little bit desirable.
I got it. Councilman Camp?
Yes, on the pictures you showed, you know what that was, what model of a Cessna the top one was and what, whether it's a sopwith camel on the lower one?
I do not, unfortunately. Yeah, I found these images. A couple of the gentlemen here may know that. We've got some people here who intend to speak who would, would probably know that.
I could, I could see that Cessna. It's probably a 182 or 82, but regardless, it could lead out. And I can see the geese going, Carl.
Other questions from the council? Would others like to testify? Please come forward. Yeah.
Here we go.
Cessna 150.
Hi, my name's Daniel Schmidt, D A N I E L S C H M I D T. I'm the owner of Hobby Town here in Lincoln, and address is 4107 Pioneer Woods Drive. And I'm just here to speak in support of this amendment to the municipal code. Really, anecdotally, we have a lot of customers that are unaware of the ordinance currently against there being, model aircraft being able to be flown in the, in parks. And so, it just, honestly, there's a lot of confusion. And so, at the point of sale, we do typically advise them to go outside of town or to work with, there's a club out in Waverly. But the reality is, is that we sell quite a few of them. We sell between the two stores that we own, between 50 and 100, just park flyers a year. And so, there's a lot of them that are out in the public's hands already. And I'm not the only avenue that people buy these through either. So, there's a lot of them in the public's hands. And we can't interact with every single customer and, and advise them of all of the ordinances. So, having an area where people are able to go and they know that it's safe, they know that it's a designated area, is, in my opinion, a good thing.
Questions from the council?
Just to clarify a little conversation we were having during our break. Tell us more about gas airplanes and the, people don't even do them.
Sure, yeah. So, gas-powered airplanes, 20 years ago was the industry standard. Electric-powered airplanes really hadn't advanced to the point where battery-operated stuff really... It wasn't realistic. They were super heavy and they didn't fly for very long. About 15 years ago now, with the advent of lithium polymers and brushless motors, their, airplanes got dramatically smaller, they got dramatically lighter, and they got dramatically safer and cheaper. So, gas-powered stuff, I haven't carried them in my store for five-plus years just strictly from a demand standpoint. If it's not selling and customers aren't interested in buying it, I don't sell them. So, it's, it is a pretty antiquated ordinance just even in of, of itself because nobody uses them anymore. Everybody uses the electric park flyer type of airplane, which, this is an example of one. Now, this is on the smaller side. This is, it's like 32 grams, which is an ounce, a little bit over an ounce. We typically sell most, most of them are between that range and about 40 inches wingspan. So, about a pound and a half is what they end up being.
Other questions from the council? Thank you very much for coming. So, we're at the end of the public hearing for that section, right? Yes.
There are no ordinances on...
Teresa, what's next? Yeah.
There are no ordinances on third reading. Our resolutions on first reading are items 8A through E. And our ordinances, first reading are items 9A through G.
Mr. Chair, I approve adjournment.
Second?
Both, we have a motion and a second for adjournment. I feel like, do we need to make directions on our delay? Does everyone know what their instructions are and what we'll need next week? I'm going to take that as a yes and, take that as a yes. And would you call the roll on our adjournment?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We are adjourned.